Yeah.
Sandy.
Here.
Bean.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Item 1.2, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 1.3, Mayor's Announcements. Just two announcements today. We had a meeting greet with the Alaris Financial, their CEO Katie Larson came up, and we had a meeting over at the Chamber as part of the Herald Advisory Group, and then myself and Mr. Phelan had a follow-up with them. I think the good part is, is that I think they're recommitting themselves really to Grand Forks, which is pretty exciting, and hopefully we'll see more investment up here. So, pretty good meeting altogether. The only other announcement I had is Martin Luther King yesterday, and I took some time, I was looking over some of his quotes, and I found one that I think is pretty fitting today. So, just gonna say this: "Faith is taking the first step even when you don't see the whole staircase." So, there's a quote from Martin Luther King. With that, I'm gonna move on to item 2, Awards, Presentations, Appointments, and Proclamations.
2.1, Skillbridge Program.
All right, Haley, please.
Good evening, Mayor Botenski and members of the council. The city of Grand Forks is always looking for different workforce and recruitment initiatives. So, last year, when Becca Kruger from the EDC came to the city to discuss a new program that the Department of Defense had started, we just decided to dive right in. This program is called Skillbridge, and the goal is to connect U.S. service members with employers who are to gain valuable civilian work experience through industry internships in their last 100 days of service. We currently have two service members who are completing DOD Skillbridge internships with us, and I'd like to introduce Tyler Steen and Leon Thomas, and they're both will talk a little bit about their path into the Skillbridge program.
Good evening, Mayor Botenski, members of the council. My name is Leon Thomas. I'm one of the Skillbridge participants. Initially, I was stationed here at Grand Forks Air Force Base in 2017. I started out as a training manager, running the maintenance group training program, and in 2018, I was selected to become the Airman Leadership Commandant, and my responsibilities there were to develop and teach brand-new sergeants how to lead and supervise other people. The sun is setting on my career. My career ends this year, and I figure what better way to leverage my talents than to share it with the city of Grand Forks. So, thank you for giving me the opportunity to work with your city in hopes that maybe I can, excuse me, maybe I can share what I have and the knowledge that I have to make this place a better place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could say, Leon is working with our Human Resource Department, and so he's taken an active part, not only with leadership and some of the human resource development. So, if you want to find Leon, he's located up near where the mayor and I are up, in HR, and he really wants to do lots of outreach to include with our city council members. So, please, while he's here, reach out to Leon, too.
Thank you. Please.
Good evening, Mayor Botenski and members of the council. My name is Tyler Steen. I'm originally from Los Angeles, California. In 2016, I decided to join the Air Force, and I got stationed up here in Grand Forks, North Dakota. I was actually one of the few that was excited to come up here to Grand Forks. Reason being, my dad's family is from Grand Forks. I visited here in the summer growing up, so it's been kind of a blessing, you know, to be up here. So, in the Air Force, I was a contracting officer, which means I solicited different projects out on base to the public. I received the bids, evaluated the bids, and then determined who won the contract award out of the base to improve the base out there. I am married. My wife followed me out here from sunny Los Angeles, California. She's opened up her own small business in town here, so she's really grown to love the town as much as I do. I recently decided why I'm here, to leave the Air Force, just to have some more stability in my life and our family's life, and we want to stay here in Grand Forks long-term and raise a family here. So, that's when I reached out to Ms. Haley about the Skillbridge program, and I am very, very excited about this opportunity. I started January 3rd as a procurement specialist for the city's area transit department, and really, really excited about the opportunity to learn a lot about how the city operates, and also hopefully be given the opportunity to be a full-time employee after the program ends.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, if I could say something about Tyler. So, you guys all know Dale Bergman, who leads our CAP program, and so Tyler's working a lot with Dale and his team, and not only is it really adding to the value of the current team, but we're trying to provide opportunities for succession planning and get people into our organization sooner rather than later, because jobs that like Dale has to do, I mean, it's a mountain of regulations, a mountain of grant applications, it's a mountain of, you know, managing people. So, we're trying to become people that want to stay in Grand Forks, and I think this is a great program with Tyler and Leon, who really want to engage in the community and also work for the city of Grand Forks. So, it's been a really great start, and we're gonna look for more opportunities.
Thank you. Mr. Phelan.
2.2, Development Agreement and Pilot Update.
Mr. Gosstead.
Yes. Just so the council is aware, we don't have an agreement in front of you tonight, and that's because we had a fairly lengthy meeting with the FuFang representatives and their attorney last Thursday. It was a productive meeting, but there's still some more work to be done on the development agreement and the pilot agreement as well. I think the best way to put it, this is a complex process, and getting everything lined up is not necessarily easy, and, but again, we're moving in the right direction on both the development agreement and the pilot agreement. One of the items listed for tonight is to set a public hearing date for the pilot agreement going forward. I think you can go ahead and set that date. That may necessitate, you know, depending on how things shake out as far as development agreement and getting all those things lined up, we could always, if need be, delay that if it's necessary to do that at some point in time in the future, but it's probably make, you probably set the date and subject to modification if that's needed.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Gosstead?
Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Okay. What, will we, how much, or what's the timing for the development agreement? And what's the possibility of being able to see the development agreement, to be able to also understand the pilot at the same time? I'm assuming there may be some pieces of it that would be important together.
Yeah, and thank you for asking the question. I failed to mention that, is we're hoping to request a working session in the city council the week of the 31st of January, targeting that as the week to have that working session, preferably the 31st. That's, you know, it's not a meeting date, but it's a regular Monday that you'd normally meet on, and at that point, we'd have the, targeted to have that agreement before you, and we can go through the terms of it along with the pilot agreement. So, thank you for asking that question, Council Member Bean.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gosstead. We will move on.
2.3, COVID-19 Update.
Michael Doolitz.
Mayor Botenski and members of the council, I'm Michael Doolitz with Grand Forks Public Health, here to do a COVID-19 update. So, looking at where things have gone over the past few weeks and since the last time I spoke with you, there's been a significant increase in the overall COVID case burden in the community, rising from 340 cases the week ending of the 1st of January, up to 1,415 cases the week ending the 16th of January. That's a 316% increase. With that, we've seen a pretty significant increase overall in the percent positivity for the cases, rising almost a 20%, as well as a significant increase in the number of tests, which has certainly put a large burden on our testing operations in the community. Vaccinations are still ongoing in the community, though they have slowed slightly. The topic du jour is the increase in the number of COVID cases in Grand Forks County. As you can see, based off of this, based off of this graph, we're at the highest case rate that we've had since the beginning of the pandemic, and this number has been continuing to increase, and I expect it will increase again tomorrow. Overall, compared to our peer counties, our numbers are kind of falling within our peer counties, but we've all seen kind of this similar kind of vertical increase in our overall case count as a community. With that increase in case count, there's been an increase in the demand for testing. So, antigen and FCR testing numbers have increased, particularly antigen testing has increased significantly, and I expect it to continue so. One of the bad things that we are seeing is there is, has been a little bit of a squeeze on antigen testing capacity as a state. The state has done a phenomenal job in making sure that our tests are available, and we're getting tests, and we aren't having to turn people away based off of testing, or, you know, based off of the availability of tests, but we are seeing a significant number of people at our testing events at the Fritz Pollard Center, and so, you know, we have to end up sometime, some days coming up with a cutoff time, and some days having limits on, you know, the test type that is available. Sometimes we don't have PCR tests available the entire time, or, you know, depending on the need, where we'll only give a person one test or the other, depending on what they need. Overall, the percent positivity increase has been quite remarkable, you know, sticking out, or, you know, sticking out as, you know, something that we weren't quite expecting. So, the percent positivity on some days and some test types can be as high as 50%. With PCR testing, we're seeing that rise in the realm of 30% as a seven-day average, while antigen tests, which is most commonly used for routine testing, has been a little bit lower. The overall rise in cases, when we compare it to what we've seen both in the fall of 2020 versus the fall of 2021, so the fall of 2020 on, that's the one that's most recent in our memory. You recall me coming in, you know, many times and saying we're seeing kind of a SOTU's pattern. You know, that correlated with basically, you know, a nice line going up for the case incidents that did probably help limit the impact on our community as far as deaths and hospitalizations, versus the fall of 2020, where we saw more of an exponential-type rise in cases that did eventually level up, but we saw a significant case burden. What we're seeing with this new outbreak is the, you know, the case numbers rising on an even higher exponential pace, so rising higher than the fall of 2020, which is certainly of concern. Where those cases are happening, they're happening predominantly in the 20 to 29 age group. They aren't necessarily sticking out as being a college, you know, age, or a college outbreak versus non-college. It does seem to be throughout that 20 to 29 age group. Again, they make up a large portion of our community, and then that's been followed by the 30 to 39 age group. There's fewer people in that age group, but, you know, a high number of cases, so that is the highest rate based on population. When we look into the 70-plus age group, our absolute number there is still staying relatively low, which I think is helping keep our hospitalization burden relatively low. But when a case happens in that age group, it's a small age group, and so that does, you know, that does raise the overall case rate significantly. You, as I mentioned earlier, when we compare Grand Forks County to other counties, Cass County has had the highest, you know, impact from this, from this current outbreak, followed by, you know, Grand Forks and Burley County. Ward County has been behind us a little bit. When we look at urban versus rural, you know, Doubles Lake, Jamestown, Williston, Dickinson are seeing similar increases in case rates. When we look into the smaller, you know, smaller counties like the ones surrounding Grand Forks, you know, Nelson County, you know, Griggs County, Trail County, Pembina County, Walsh County, those numbers actually have stayed pretty low, so it does seem to be, you know, relatively concentrated right now into the larger communities in North Dakota. We have been fortunate. We've seen an increase in the number of hospitalizations, but the hospitalization numbers have been, you know, relatively at what we've been seeing with Delta. Hopefully, those numbers stay relatively low. Even if we have, you know, and it's looking like the hospitalization rate with Omicron is lower, the, you know, significant increase in cases does provide some concern that we could see hospital impacts and death impacts down the road, but it's seeming to pan out right now that it's not going to quite be, you know, nearly as bad as what we saw in 2020. That said, when we look at other states, including states that have peaked, there has been a lot of variability in the hospitalization impact and the death impact thus far. It's too early to talk too much about deaths, but hospitalizations, it has been quite variable from state to state in how high their hospitalization rates have been. So, looking at our bottom line, the hospitalization numbers right now are similar to the Delta wave despite the increase in the overall cases with this Omicron wave. Again, we've been seeing a significant increase in cases week over week, and our percent positivity is at the highest that we've seen in the pandemic thus far. You know, our threats moving forward, you know, it's gonna be important that we keep that testing capacity up. We want individuals to get a test, you know, when they need it, you know, to have that extra, you know, that extra reassurance or that extra validation. You know, right now, home tests are available. They can be kind of hard to get, but they are available, and so our actual case number is probably higher because there's probably a fair number of unreported cases as well. There has been, you know, some discussion on the national level that we will likely see an increase in home-based testing as well. That's an overall positive for the community because we want people to, you know, be able to make that decision on testing, you know, when they need it, not have to wait, you know, until, you know, the next testing event availability or, you know, having to pay a large amount out of pocket for testing. You know, really the next coming weeks, you know, the biggest thing that we're gonna be looking for is that increase in hospitalizations to see what kind of impact we are going to have with Omicron. As I said, it's variable between states on the hospitalization impact, so that's really going to, you know, give us the idea on what the actual impact is for Grand Forks. With that, I am open to any questions.
Mr. Weber.
Thank you, Mayor. The testing, Pollard Center's been very busy. Are we having to turn anybody away?
Councilmember Weber, the people that are being turned away are, you know, if there, if there's a long line extending out of the building or something like that at, you know, like 10:40, you know, our kind of line cutoff time, so we can't add more people into the line and get them through in a reasonable amount of time. Our, you know, a lot of the staff that we have helping with the testing events have multiple roles, you know, either with Grand Forks Public Health or as state nurses, and so we need to make sure to have a cutoff time for that. UND has been a really good partner, though, in that they've allowed members of the community to come to the Wilkerson Dining Hall and get tested at their on-campus testing opportunities as well. So, you know, that we have referred to people on a limited basis to help, you know, help people not feel like we're just kind of pushing them away.
Do you have any requests or recommendations on who should be getting tested? Are you seeing people who don't need to be tested, or do you just want to see as many people as are willing to show up? What's your preference there?
Councilmember Weber, what we have, you know, what we have implemented has been, you know, requirements, or not necessarily requirement, but, you know, a recommendation of only one test per day. So, for a while, we would do a PCR test, and we'd also do an antigen, you know, if you needed it for work and you also wanted to know sooner rather than later, or needed it for travel or whatever, we'd do both tests on the same day. Now, we're just doing one test or the other, and that's based off of the individual's preference. You know, one thing I did want to add, going off of PCR testing, is Ultrap has been a phenomenal partner in making sure we have prompt PCR testing available in the community, which has really stood out compared to the rest of the state. We can get results from Ultrap on a very quick basis. They reserve a certain, you know, number of spots in their, in their testing queue for Fritz Pollard Center testing, PCR testing. So, that has been, you know, outstanding for us as a community to have that available. So, that's one of the things that's keeping testing really available and really prompt in the community.
Throughout the pandemic, public health has been doing an amazing job at these testing events. The public has been great, very cooperative. The hospitalization rates, we're currently less than half of what we were at our peak last November of '20. I know that Minneapolis, based upon their wastewater testing, thinks that they may have already peaked now. In the past, we have had wastewater reports. I'm not seeing that in the, in the today's report. Is that there? Is that something we're still doing? What do we know there?
So, Councilmember Weber, we are still doing the wastewater reports. You know, I do keep an eye on them. You know, they don't really, you know, I don't usually include them in the report because it's probably not really telling us that much more than what we're getting based off of our case count right now, but at various points in the pandemic, it has been a really good tool for us to kind of gauge where we're going one way or the other. You know, right now, it's just been a little bit more variable. You know, the sample numbers will be, you know, kind of variable in between days and things like that, so, you know, that's why it hasn't been getting included.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Doolitz. Thank you, Mayor. President Sandy.
Mr. Doolitz, any idea how the community is, or the percentage of cases of influenza we're seeing in the community?
And I know if that's outside, if you don't know, that's okay. I'm, I'm, I'm hearing anecdotally that there's lots of influenza going around the community as well.
Councilmember Sandy, we, I, I've heard the same things. We have seen a pretty significant increase in the number of influenza cases in the community. You know, that seemed to have peaked kind of late December, you know, based off of the limited amount of information I do have on that. There has been some deaths overall in the state, you know, but looking statewide, it's been about five influenza-related deaths this year. But influenza did kind of, it hit right before Omicron. Fortunately, it's not, you know, it's kind of tapered off a little bit since then, but it did hit the community.
Do you know, outside of, do you know where people can go and when they should get tested for influenza?
So, generally, influenza testing would be part of an office visit to a provider. So, if you're going to your normal primary care provider or your urgent care clinic, you would get, you know, potentially tested for the flu or something like that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Weber.
All right. Vice President Mock.
I guess anecdotally, again, I've heard quite a few people say that they've had a rapid test that they tested negative for, and then later their PCR test was positive. Is there any concern with limiting to one test a day that we're not going to catch some of that for some people?
Councilmember Mock, what, you know, what, what our policy has been is to limit it to one, you know, one option or the other. There is some discretion on the part of the people doing the testing, that if, you know, a PC, or if an antigen test is negative, that they could potentially proceed to a PCR test if they felt that was warranted. So, you know, like every, everything, there is a little bit of gray area in there that, you know, that the staff can exercise, so.
All right. Anything further for Mr. Doolitz?
One quick question, Mr. Doolitz.
Yeah, Mr. Bean, please.
What's the availability of N95 masks, and are they still available through the Health Department?
Councilmember Bean, N95 masks are still available through Grand Forks Public Health. We have bags of five masks, and we just restocked last week, so we do have a fair number available, available, and we still have had steady demand for those masks. Otherwise, you know, private vendors in the community are also able to offer masks. I've heard various locations, such as hardware stores and things like that, have been good spots for people looking for them.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Doolitz. Moving on to three, public hearings and second readings of ordinances.
Item 3.1, public hearing and second reading of ordinance amending the street and highly plan to include public rights away shown as dedicated on the Platte West Elementary Re subdivision.
All right, thank you. We'll open up the public hearing for item 3.1. Was there anyone here to speak on item 3.1? All right. Public hearing period is closed. I guess it'll open up for comment with council. Got a motion approved from Mr. Sandy, a second from Mr. Weber. Any further comment?
I have a question, Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Bean, please.
Probably for Mr. Brooks. Just a question on the Columbia Court Lane that connects to Sixth Avenue North. Does, and then it transitions at the alley to a right-of-way? Could you maybe walk me through that?
Sure. So, where the, where the current alley exists on the southern portion, I'll talk about it in the southern portion and the northern portion, Councilman Bean. The southern portion will remain relatively the same. Along the west side, you have one individual there on the, on the southern portion on the west side that currently uses that alley. The width won't change a lot. We did add a little bit more to add a sidewalk that's gonna go from, along the east side of that portion. And then, as we went further to the northern portion, we widened it out because there is intent to have driveways. That'd be the front of lots nine, 10, and 11, and we still wanted room as well for a sidewalk.
So, is the road, is this an alley or a road, and what's the width through the whole length of it?
The northern portion, I guess, and you're talking the width of what will be constructed?
The right-of-way.
The width of the right-of-way will be 40, I'm starting to feel really old right now because I was having a hard time reading this, but I want to say it's, it's about 46 feet, roughly 46 to 47 feet in that northern portion. Is that sound right? Thank you, yeah.
And what is it on the southern portion?
20 feet.
So, that's probably my question. The right-of-way is 20 feet on the southern portion, it's 46 or 47 on the northern. What's the, the street width gonna be? Because it's no longer an alley, it's going to be a street that serves those three lots to the north.
Yeah, so, as it widens out today on the air, there, there is some parking that is along the east side on that northern portion today, and in addition, we knew that we were gonna have a sidewalk there. So, the, currently, that roadway width is wider to allow for that parking on that northern portion. That is not intended to be the same width as, the pavement won't be the same width on the southern and northern portions.
What will be the width on the northern portion of the pavement?
I'd have to, you know, I'd have to defer to our engineering. I'm thinking, you know, it could be 28 to 30, but I don't know if they've gotten into that level of detail. 30 and a half. So, I think CPS, who's here as well, they, they've already done some preliminary designs. They're looking at a 30 and a half-foot section there, which would be similar to most local streets.
And I think, I agree. I think that's ideal. I just wondered why we wouldn't have carried that all the way down to Sixth Avenue.
There was an intent, so when we went to the neighborhood meeting, they didn't want to make that a throughway either, so there was an intent to kind of not make that a spot that would be having additional people kind of cut through there. So, we wanted to limit it to just those who intended to be that area. If we were making it 30, then you could potentially have more people heading up along Sixth Avenue to the north that may cut through that area. That, that was not the intention to make a cut-through area, if that makes sense, for people that weren't living along that, that area.
Mr. Brooks, I think what's gonna happen, Columbia Court is to the north, and we're actually creating another access to Columbia Court coming up that currently doesn't exist. Is that right?
No, it, it current, it exists today.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep.
All right. Any further comment? Yep. Ms. Mock, please.
And the intended design is to have parking spaces with each lot, and then I imagine there's parking on Sixth and 25th as well, or, yeah.
On Sixth Avenue. Yeah, there'd be on-street there. And in, if you look at that, the lots nine, 10, 11, up in that northwest corner, those lots are deeper, and the intent is that they're probably gonna have longer driveways there as well. there as well than, than the rest of the units.
So that would take care of some of the off-street parking?
Correct.
Probably in the longer driveway.
Yep. Because I don't think we're going to be doing on-street parking on Columbia Court Lane, but that's going to be a little tight through that area on purpose.
All right. Any further comment? All right, we have a motion, a second on the floor. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Aye.
So I believe the motion carried five to two with Weber and Dokler dissenting.
All right. 3.2, public hearing and second reading of ordinance to amend the zoning map to approve West Go Micro PUD.
All right. Thank you. Same procedure. Opens up the council. Mr. Brooks is there. I'm imagining voting will go a similar manner. We have any comments or motions from council?
Is there a public hearing, Mayor?
Oh, yeah. Let's open. Item 3.2, let's open a public hearing. Is anyone here to speak on item 3.2? All right, we'll close the public hearing. I'm looking for council comment.
More approval.
Mr. Wygo, we got a motion to approve, and a second from Mr. Weber. Any further comment? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. All right, that motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Brooks. All right, moving on to four action items. We were going to pull 411, 412, and 413. Was any other items that council wished to be pulled this evening? All right, thank you. So we will look at approval for items 4.1, 4.2, 4.3, 4.4, 4.5, 4.6, 4.7, 4.8, 4.9, 4.10. We got a motion to approve from President Sandy, a second from Mr. Weber. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Those motions carry unanimously.
4.11, conditional use permit, Sharehouse Incorporated to operate a residential addiction recovery assistance facility at 1122 North 43rd Street.
Thank you. And I know we got Mr. Hagland here to give us a short presentation to kind of let us know a little bit about the company and what you're doing over there, so take it away.
Let's see if we can get this to work properly. Mayor Bocinski, members of the council. My name is Ty Hagland. I serve as president and CEO of Sharehouse, located in Fargo, North Dakota. I want to say thank you for the time tonight to provide a quick presentation on our application for conditional use permit to operate a residential facility in Grand Forks. For over 45 years, Sharehouse has been the regional leader in SUD and mental health services for the upper Midwest. For those 45 years, we've been located in Fargo, and tonight we bring forward an application that hopes to establish a 16-bed residential facility located in the northwest corner of Grand Forks. Our mission is to provide personalized recovery services for individuals, families in the community. We focus on everyone, and we liken ourselves as a working-class organization. So our focus is on not, not only the rich doctor who may come through our doors, but also on the local sheriffs, deputies, the construction worker, and yes, sometimes we have felons. Our vision is pretty straightforward. We, we believe that recovery is possible for everybody. We live and breathe this, and we hope to bring this level of commitment to your community through this application. We focus very highly on patient experience at Sharehouse. We are a very rare facility in the mental health space that does not lock patients in rooms, does not lock patients in wings, and does not use restraints. And through that, we have to out the best patient experience, also known as customer service, in order to combat the disease of addiction and be able to treat our patients. We do that by focusing on four key elements, and that's providing courtesy to our patients, working as a team, as a community, being very attentive to the needs of our patients, but also their partnering clinicians, and understanding the individualized journey of every patient. Our belief in our services is backed up by being a center of excellence for the region. Not only are we a GuideStar Silver, Silver-rated charity for the region, we've also been ranked as the number-one treatment center in this region for consecutive years, and are also accredited through CARF. We follow clinical standards through the American Society of Addiction Medicine. Our clinical, clinical standards are handed down for us from a national organization and then translated through multiple state entities that we are licensed with, including North Dakota and Minnesota. As an organization, we operate as a nonprofit agency. In our mental health and SUD space, it is, there are a variety of different backgrounds when it comes to ownership structure, but we believe in a nonprofit structure and believe on being led by the community. Our organization and our governance is pretty straightforward, but through this process, we've been very fortunate to have great community leaders from the region step up and want to be a part of our leadership structure. We're lucky every single day to have people like Pastor John Roberts, who lead a variety of churches in this region, support us as our corporation board, but also simultaneously having a federal, federal appeals judge and Judge Ralph Erickson on our foundation. In addition, we're lucky to have individuals who are state's attorneys, state judges, entrepreneurs, and clinicians from around the region who make up the rest of our governance structure. Sharehouse currently operates with 140 total employees, 22 board members, 40 licensed clinicians, 35 nurse aides, and one subsidiary foundation. In recent weeks, we've been lucky to pick up our first Grand Forks board member in the form of Victoria Vold, a psychiatric nurse in your community, but also a lawyer. We're able, we feel incredibly fortunate to have her serving on our board, helping us guide our ship as we enter the Grand Forks market. Sharehouse is seen as a regional provider. Two weeks ago, we were lucky to have patients from seven different states from around the region receiving services in our 90, in our 87 inpatient beds here in Fargo. As we expand to Grand Forks, we expect to see that diversity. Right now, we serve not only 14 additional states that were contracted, but 14 additional states, but we also have seven tribal nations that we provide services to, and we expect that to be continued up in Grand Forks as well. Our clinical model, or what we are known for that sets our clinical standards apart, is pretty straightforward. We believe in an individualized treatment approach, which means we work with every individual to work with all the factors that cause their addiction. We work as treatment teams. We provide treatment universities, which are different than your canned 30-day step-type approaches. And then we also really focus on relapse prevention and support. And we focus on that relapse prevention and support because SUD or these mental health diseases that our folks are fighting are chronic diseases, and we understand that it's going to take maintenance for, throughout the years. We operate as a treatment team, and sometimes, you know, from an administrative side, this may not be the most cost-effective approach, but we believe by working on the whole individual, we're going to be able to have the highest outcomes for our patients. We provide a wide varieties of levels of care, including everything from assessments to mental health, to standalone mental health clinics, to peer support and seminars. Our strategic priorities are to be the best in this region. We wear that on our sleeve, we take that with pride, and we continue to work as a nonprofit organization on these strategic priorities, working in conjunction with not only our clinicians, but our community partners. Our policy challenges are neither short nor simple, but we believe that leaning into these as an organization and as the center of excellence, we believe we can partner with communities to help address these and help move the ball forward. Some of the, some of the policies, you are, the policy challenges that we face, you're very well familiar with. In North Dakota, last year, we saw a 49% increase in overdose deaths. On the Minnesota side, we saw nearly a 50% jump. The other policy challenges that we face are pretty similar to what you experienced in your own workforces. We saw a 20% LEC shortage, or Licensed Addiction Counselor shortage, this last year, which, to take into terms from a state level, means that for the first time in over two decades, we had less licensed clinicians enter the workforce than we did exit. And so it's putting an even larger challenge on that workforce side. Another challenge that we're, challenges that we're currently facing relate to both potency and access. The drugs that we are experiencing and dealing with every day have become so much more potent. The old, the old standard used to be morphine, but as we deal with the drugs in the streets and on the communities now, we're dealing with everything flaced with fentanyl, which means that we're dealing with a drug that's 10 times stronger than morphine. The other issue that we're seeing quite often, and we see it in the Grand Forks community, is access. What used to be classifications of drugs along demographic lines have become incredibly blurred, and so it's easier to access not only drugs on a everyday basis, but it's also easier to access more potent, more potent drugs in a wider variety. The one thing that I want to make sure that I highlight today is that there is a strong ROI for SUD treatment in your community. And for every dollar invested in SUD treatment, we know, based upon studies time and time again in the last decade, that for every dollar invested, we save $6 in corrections or $12 in healthcare costs. These are real, and we have community partners every day, whether it's the Cass County Jail or now the Grand Forks County Jail that's reaching out. We understand the value of our services. Similarly, here in Fargo, we have Ascencia, Ascencia and Sanford, who are great partners, and they understand the ROI. We now have Altrus stepping up and seeing that value as well, and we're excited to partner with them. The one thing to keep in mind is that these patients are not revenue-neutral. So if we do not treat these patients, they cost communities, communities like Grand Forks, millions and millions of dollars a year. To close out my presentation, I'm just going to talk just very briefly about what we plan to provide in Grand Forks and our future ambitions. Starting on January 4th, we're set to open a 16-bed adult residential facility, offering the highest of intensive services. These patients that we will receive into this facility will be your direct applicants from ERs, ICUs, jails, and psychiatric hospitals, as well as community, community members who self-refer themselves. We plan to offer a variety of amenities onsite. In the property that we submitted forward, we've already invested about $150,000 in renovations and have a lot larger schematic plan for what we intend for that to be. As you look through the presentation, we have a long-term plan for the adjoining lots as well. We're lucky to be able to work with acres as we move forward on this project and developing that to scale, but also developing it in a way where we can provide certain aspects of that back to the community to create a sense of community around recovery is something that we intend to do and we tend to be very vocal about. We tend to, we plan to offer not only onsite gym facilities, but classrooms, lounges, and single occupancy rooms for our patients. Quite often, mental health patients and SUD patients aren't afforded the ability to have single occupancy, so we expect that this facility at all times will not only be full, but will be high demand throughout the region. Our commitment to you guys from the, from the city council side, but also the community members is pretty straightforward. We want to be a great community partner for Grand Forks, and we mean that in earnest. We want to be a great clinical resource, and we want to be a thought leader. So if there are opportunities for us to lean into some of the challenges that you're facing, we want to make sure that we're there with you. In closing out with this, I want to say thank you for the time. I want to thank, thank you for your consideration to our permit, and I will yield to any questions that any of your council members may have.
Thank you. Mr. Hagland, any comments or questions? I think you did a great job. You've got just a motion for, to approve, and a, from Mr. Weber and a second from Ms. Dokler. Any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Hagland. Thank you for everything you're doing for the community. Take care.
4.12 is the Fufon Group Wet Corn Mill Property Tax Incentive.
Hey, Mayor Bocinski, members of city council. So what I say in 412 also aligns with 413. In your staff report, I have suggested a February date for a public hearing. I'm asking you, as part of this motion, to amend that motion to March 7th of 2022. We had a really good local government advisory committee. We had full participation, both in person and virtually. Thank you to Council President Sandy and Vice President Mock for leading on the city's portion of that seven-member group. So we briefed both the, the Fufon Group, that got unanimous approval, to move forward to all the different, the various taxing, local taxing entities, and to set the public hearing date. We also had a good meeting on Olive and Boutique Hotel and, and provided a briefing on that. That did have one vote by school board member Carpenter, so it was a 6-1 vote, to move that forward. But we will, we'll discuss both of those. And, you know, Fufon Group, the Wet Corn Mill is a different project than a mixed-use boutique hotel. We did enlist Ms. Michaela Hewitt from Baker Tilly to provide some financial analysis from a third party on, on the boutique hotel on development. And as you read through that staff report on, I guess, taking both of that, it's only for the boutique hotel, it's not for the event center that's already there. So that's spelled out in, in the, the agreement. So what I'm asking for you to do tonight is to set the public hearing date for March 7th, 2022, for the Fufon Group Wet Corn Mill. I would say this, we are, as Mr. Goss said, I said, we are in the midst of negotiating both a pilot agreement and a development agreement. We anticipate, and we really want a work session with U.S. City Council members on January 31st, which would be our open date here in, in January. And then that would, if things go successfully, we plan to bring that to the February 7th city council meeting for further discussion and perhaps, you know, on further deliberation and a final approval of that. So it gives us some time to work through February to get us to this public hearing date on March 7th. But I would say with the Fufon Group Wet Corn Mill, we may have to amend the public hearing date on this payment of lieu of taxes. So I just want to highlight that. But I think we should move forward, think the best, and if we have to adapt our game plan, let's do that. I will anticipate being on the school board agenda for both of these next week, Monday, January 24th, the school board. There are six, they have succeeding two meetings in February that I can follow up on, but I'm going to plan to try to go to the school board on January 24th, move both of these forward from, from a school board perspective. And then we would go to the county commission, and again, they meet the first and third Tuesdays of February, and I anticipate being on the first meeting in February at the county commission for that. So what I'm asking tonight, again, is to move forward with the Fufon Group, set the public hearing date of March 7th, 2022, with the prescribed and recommended pilot agreement that we've discussed, 90% over the first 10 years. Years 11 through 20 would be at 70% under a pilot 20-year agreement, subject to final review and approval of the city attorney.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Phelan. We got motions or comments from council, please. Mr. Sandy.
I'll move, we set the public hearing date for March 7th, 2022, with the proposed pilot agreement with further review by the city attorney.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second? A motion from President Sandy, a second from Mr. Weber. Any further comment on item 4.12? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Thank you. That motion carries unanimously.
And 4.13, as Todd stated, is Boutique Hotel Property Tax Incentive.
Mayor Bocinski, members of city council. Again, I'm asking you to set the public hearing for March 7th, 2022. And in this particular case, there is a Renaissance Zone application that covers both the Boutique Hotel and the Event Center as a five-year, 100%. You have already granted that. In this pilot agreement, I am asking just solely for the Boutique Hotel to grant a 10-year payment of lieu of taxes. Years 6 through 10 would be 100%. Years 11 through 15 would be at, I got to remember this, 80%. 80%. So it's ineffective over those, over those 10 years of a 90% pilot. That's what we'd move forward, so, thank you, Mayor Bocinski.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Weber.
Recognizing this is the first time this developer has asked for something like this from the city, I'll, I'll move approval for what's proposed.
We got a second from Mr. Bean. Any further comment?
Mayor Bocinski, for the record, if I could also say, we had strong recommendations from Greater Grand Forks Visit, otherwise known as the CVB, and Julie Reagan. She was a real proponent. We need this in our community to do what she does effectively, and also for
And also from Mr. Lund, from our Economic Development Corporation, from a real strategic business asset for our community development.
All right. And just to be clear, that motion was to set the public hearing for March 7th, correct, Mr. Weber? Yes. All right. Any further comment? Mr. Sandy.
I think although Mr. Phelan had already mentioned it, I think it is important to note that one of the school board members voted no to even move the concept forward to their governing body. And so I think the people of Grand Forks who would like to see a boutique hotel in our downtown should reach out to their school board members and let them know that this is important for our community. Let them know that, and if you don't want it, let them know that too. Participate in your local government. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you, President Sandy. Any further comment? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously. All right, we're on to five information items.
5.1, Portfolio Management as of 12:31.
Thank you. And now we're on to citizen comments. Jerry, could you pass this around? I think there's some more people here that might want to speak, so I'm gonna, I got the first sheet, so.
And I will just state that there have been citizen comments, and they're attached to your agenda, that we had received as of 5 o'clock.
Thank you. All right, we've got Charles Vondal.
Mayor Bocinski and Chamber Cryer, sorry, are members. To start off, I wanted to say I'm not only here as a student at the University of North Dakota and as the president of the Korean Trans Alliance at UND, I'm actually here as a 23-year-old transgender resident of Grand Forks who has lived here all of his life. I grew up watching the city grow in both size and diversity, yet seeing what has been happening using Facebook has actually broke my heart. The thing that really broke my spirit was reading on the mayor's Facebook page about the North Dakota Catholic Conference agreeing with it. The one quote that really hurt was, "We are a friendly and inclusive population that shares common values with our brethren from many religions. Every individual is a fellow human being and should be treated as such. This proposal by our beloved university spits in the face of everything we believe in. Compelling speech and forcing an ideology on our students, our children, and our community is a herit." The thing is, what ideology do you speak of? That there are more than two genders? If you had paid attention in biology, you would have realized that there's more than two combinations of chromosomes to get one sex. Even in other cultures, they have more than two genders. Yet that is not what breaks my spirit. It is saying respecting the transgender community by calling them by their name and correct pronouns is a compelling speech. No, that is respect. We are just like you. We have family that love us. Some of us go to church, some of us aren't really religious, yet we are human, just like you. There's a quote I like to use from Martin Luther King Jr.'s book, Strength to Love. "The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in the moment of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at times of challenge and controversy." My mother raised me to always listen to both sides and do the research before heading straight into a battle, as she likes to call them. She also taught me to respect other people's opinions. Yet sometimes, one must take the first step out of your comfort and beliefs to see that the world is not just black and white of male or female. This gender-inclusive policy that is just a draft at the moment at the university is something that some should take time to read and look over. If you truly have questions or worries, ask them. You might learn something new. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Claire Gaddy.
I'm a transgender woman, apostle of Jesus Christ, and a citizen of Grand Forks. I am sent here neither by human commission nor from human authorities, but through Jesus Christ and God the Father. To the city council and my fellow citizens of Grand Forks, I am thankful and give praise to President Armacost and his leadership, for the gender inclusion policy is a human rights policy. It reflects the value and dignity that all individuals deserve. The comments in opposition to this policy have been hurtful and made from a place of Jesus challenges us to have practices and beliefs that include everyone and give everyone a place at the table. Yesterday, we celebrated Martin Luther King Jr., and he preached the same thing. This is not just an issue of pronouns. This is about establishing protection for a marginalized people. Please support this policy to acknowledge the human rights, respect, and dignity that we deserve, and affirm that Grand Forks is a progressive, inclusive, and loving city for all. I think we would all want that. Mayor Bocinski, I am hurt and disappointed that you circulated that letter on social The letter was alarmist, reactionary, and contained transphobic rhetoric. It spread misunderstanding and fear about the policy. I wonder if you reached out to a transgender person to hear their side of it before you spread the letter on social media. I pray that your actions are guided by discourse, discernment, research, and a civil rights perspective. I say this not from a place of personal condemnation, but as a responsible citizen wanting to hold her leadership accountable. May the grace of our Lord Jesus Christ be with your spirit. Amen.
Thank you.
We've heard a couple quotes of Martin Luther. One of my favorites is, "We have before us the glorious opportunity to inject a new dimension of love into the veins of our civilization." We can go over stats of the fact that 75% of our LGBTQ+ youth reported that they had experienced discrimination based on their sexual orientation or gender identity at least once in their lifetime. We can talk about the fact that transgender and non-binary youth who have reported having pronouns respected by all the people they lived with attempted suicide at half the rate of those who did not have their pronouns respected by anyone with whom they lived. These come from the Trevor Project, and it's a website that I invite you to look at. Fay Seidler in Fargo, with the Community Uplift Program, released the North Dakota LGBTQ+ School Climate Report, of which I know it was emailed to all of you on the city council, including yourself. And it says that 86% of our queer youth don't turn to adults when feeling sad or empty. And also that misgendering and discriminating against youth dramatically increases attempts on their own life. As a community member and as a parent, the only thing that I can do besides explain to you the fact that pronouns and names are important, and as part of an expansion of Title IX, this importance was going to be part of policy. You said this proposal by our beloved university spits in the face of everything we believe in. Compelling speech and forcing an ideology on our students, our children, and our community is abhorrent. It is possible for a university to focus on academic rigor and preparing our youth to enter the workforce with the skills of adulthood. A sad day for my alma mater. I support the attached letter wholeheartedly. I'm going to speak from my personal experience for this part of your statement. I personally came to Grand Forks after the flood. I was impressed with the diversity of the community and UND. I purposely took classes offered at UND that helped pave the way for my own understanding of the world, and because of being white, cisgendered, and being a Christian in the background that I grew up in, it helped that expansion. I know that as a businessman, you know that being prepared for the workforce means being able to understand the diversity needed to make a strong team in that workforce. Through my work in the community, especially with our transgender community, we have presented to many students across UND as part of the way to build a bridge with these students entering their career fields. The work of our transgender medicine, therapy, inclusion, and understanding is not as advanced as other countries, nor is our awareness of how children navigate their world when born in the wrong body. Being a parent is a very amazing and daunting experience in general, but being the parent of an LGBTQI II Spirit plus child can be more terrifying when the news media and publicly-elected officials use this population to drive their personal moralities and opinions. With the help of our family, medical entities, religious groups, and businesses, we've recognized the names of our community members and their pronouns. The more inclusion they show, the more success they have as a business and a provider. Classroom showing inclusion and not oppressing students with their own values and opinions, this promotes learning and inclusion as well. Our transgender community is constantly aware that their body does not match their identity. Being LGBTQI II Spirit plus is not a lifestyle. This is who they are, no different than myself being straight and cisgender. There are countless examples that humans are born with chromosomal differences and brainwaves that don't match their sex assigned at birth. I'm willing to help you go over this research to help further education where needed as an ally. Personal experience of their constant bullying and harassment would be me shielding these humans as they are physically spit on during events and in their daily lives. Personal experience would be to take a phone call or receive a message that they are trapped in a situation at work or at school because they are being targeted for harassment and Personal experience would be holding the hand of one of my family while they explained to a doctor that their transitioning surgeries have nothing to do with their sore throat because the doctor is curious. Personal experience is having a human melt in my arms because they have been outcast and thrown out of their families because of these religious beliefs you talk of. These humans now get to navigate their world without the family dynamic that you so wholeheartedly recognized during your campaign as one of the reasons you wanted Grand Forks to be a better place. Personal experience is holding a terrified performer's hand after they've been threatened in the bathroom or the lobby of an event simply because their attacker deemed it okay to use their personal religion as a weapon against them. These all can be boasted by the social media posts of our own elected officials. You say that you support a church that has already recognized with their own words and their wallet countless times they were wrong, to the point of $3.8 billion paid out by the Catholic Church for cases dating back to the 1950s. You wholeheartedly backed this one church. This reaction is common for someone that has had barely any exposure to our community. I invite you to roundtable with us, be present with us, and allow yourself to be vulnerable in your mistake. A mistake is a mistake only after the behavior changes for the better. I remember you declining to be at Pride Events due to scheduling conflicts. They come up. I also remember during Pride in the Park, when you made it and introducing you to members of our community, you smiled, shook hands, and enjoyed a celebration as you were welcomed by so many, including our transgender community. Pronouns, names, you met them all. Now I ask why won't you welcome us back? A bridge can be turned rainbow, but we can also focus on the bridge that can build a better Grand Forks and a better community together. Thank you.
Raquel Smith.
I don't have notes. I'm just going to speak as kind of an odd person in the group. I'm a straight woman, Christian. When I say Christian, my parents ran an organization here in town called Mission Socorro their entire life. If you ask anybody who was around at the time, they all know them. Our phone number at home was 775 HELP. When somebody called, they didn't ask if they were gay, what race they were, they just said, "How can I help you?" And that's what they did their entire life, donating to making Grand Forks a better place. After I was in Venezuela with my parents at kindergarten, we came back up here. I lived here my entire life. I grew up very religious, traveling around the country preaching the gospel, didn't know any LGBT people, didn't know what gay meant other than happy, didn't have any idea. College, when I went to University of North Dakota, all that changed. My older brother got a job at the Chester Fred's Auditorium as a stagehand, got me on there as a wardrobe head, and I met some LGBT people. And being someone who went to high school here in town, I was bullied my entire life. There is a need for a policy like this. Everyone gets bullied. I got bullied for being overweight, for being, you name it. First time I met LGBT community was the first time I was welcomed wholeheartedly and welcomed into a community with no questions, no bullying, no harassment, no anything. And I would put my life on the line for any one of these people. I don't have any kids of my own, but I am the chosen auntie to a bunch of LGBT kids, and I see every day the heartbreak when they are harassed, they are abused. I know of a 16-year-old kid here in Grand Forks that killed himself rather than come out to his Christian parents. If this policy can save one life, that's all that matters. And as far as the religious aspect, the classes I took at the University of North Dakota were in Religious Studies and Literary Translation. And if you want to know what the Bible says about it, the Bible doesn't even use the word homosexual till translation in 1946, incorrectly translated passage. And in Moses, in Exodus 3, they use God's name as Yahweh. Yah is a feminine pronoun, and Weh is a masculine pronoun. I guess that means God's non-binary. If He can accept that, we should be able to accept each other for that.
Ada Dockler.
So I just wanted to talk about some of my own experiences and also experience with my classmates because we are the statistics you guys talk about. We are the LGBTQ youth. So yeah. I never wanted to come out. You know, there's a mix of reasons, but the main one was how scared I felt, which, you know, is completely normal, but it was amplified by the fact that I lived in the Midwest. I lived here. I knew what happened to people who came out. Any of my friends who were part of the community or who were assumed to be part of the LGBTQ+ community were ruthlessly harassed, bullied, isolated. We heard about the kids who killed themselves because their parents didn't accept them. They were called, I've seen people get called slurs. I've known kids who were pantsed, actively walled off, abandoned, and even assaulted. But whenever they tried to do anything, whenever they tried to report, they were told that they were already rocking the boat and that their aggressors didn't mean anything by it. So you should just get over it. They didn't know better. Most just stopped reporting, others just accepted it as part of life. In fact, when I first came out to my friends, I was told that I shouldn't tell anybody else because they were worried something would happen, and they knew that if I did, if something did and I tried to do something, nothing would happen. I came out anyway. I had faith in my community and the people I grew up with, my family, my friends, my neighbors. I thought they would protect me. I thought they wouldn't say anything, and I thought they would just accept. But the same day I came out, a classmate screamed slurs at me while I walked down the hallway, and all the people I thought would stand up, would say something, just looked the other way. This doesn't sound like the respectful, dignified, civil place mentioned in your post, does it? That's the thing, it's not. It's not for a lot of people. And to have our mayor say these things is really hurtful. Your words were hurtful, and you owe the community an apology. Grand Forks can be better. Grand Forks can welcome, but it won't with the mindset that I have been on display these past few days. It's the culture of intolerance and ignorance masked by the North Dakota nice, you know, the neighborly attitude that allowed this. the neighborly attitude that allowed this to happen. If we are to change, we need to acknowledge the problem, we need to apologize, and we need to reconcile with LGBTQ+ community and move forward together. And if we do that, then Grand Forks, North Dakota can truly be legendary. Thank you.
Brenda Lewis?
Good evening, Mayor Bochensky and members of the city council. I'm Brenda Lewis. I'm a mom of three kiddos here, new to Grand Forks, and also I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Education for Grand Forks Public Schools. One of the reasons that I'm here tonight and in Grand Forks is that I have the absolute privilege and extreme responsibility to lead the work of the school system around diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. It is my job to serve as an ally and an advocate for the students and families you see in front of you here. And I have had many people outreach to me since the post from last week. And I am choosing one letter to read tonight that I have had brought forward to me out of many. This letter states, "As a member of the transgender community, I felt very uncomfortable with the Facebook post where the Grand Forks mayor had recently supported a letter from a religious group. In this letter, it addresses a stand against a proposed policy by the University of North Dakota on gender inclusion on campus. The writer of this letter stated that some potential students were uncomfortable with a roommate that doesn't identify with their biological binary sex. I feel that this directly impacts me as the type of language in the letter is enticing fear of a person like me, that all people don't respect me as a person, or that I am not going to be treated like a human being because I identify as other than my biological gender. In a dorm setting, normally you can request a new roommate for various reasons. And if someone is uncomfortable with the roommate, they can easily request a move to other room, another room. Simple fix, there is no need to create public uproar or fear on where a transgendered student can reside. If everyone is treated with quote, "respect, dignity, and civility," it is very contradictory of what the mayor has indicated on his Facebook post that includes his political support of the letter from North Dakota Catholic Conference. I'm not feeling very supported. I'm not feeling very respected right now. Transgender people are people. We should be treated the same as cisgender people. We should have the same rights to a safe, educational, and learning environment. Such statements in that letter made me feel as if I am not valid within the Grand Forks community. And the other people feel that I shouldn't be in school around other students because of my gender identity, although the mayor won't see me as a human being. Statements in the Facebook post, supported by the mayor, extremely transphobic. These types of transphobic ideologies don't show that the Grand Forks community shares the values of respect, dignity, and civility. Do better, mayor, and city council members. Your words can hurt. Please try to learn more about all of the various people that you were elected to represent in this community." The student and parent asked me to share their name. The student, age 14, is Soren Henry, and Sloan Henry is the supportive parent. It is my job to ensure that all of our voices in Grand Forks Public Schools are heard with a particular focus on our students that are most marginalized historically and present day. Thanks for your time today.
Leo, I'm not sure if that's Ote.
Adi.
Adi, perfect.
Mayor and council members, my name is Leo Adi. I'm a student at U N D. and I am new to Grand Forks as of probably a year ago. So I can't say too much. I just literally came out on Sunday. However, I met this wonderful group of people on Saturday, and they readily took me into their family, and I learned about this. I don't know too much, I'll be honest, but I think one thing that's important when talking about something, one thing that I learned in Congress and debate, is that when you're talking about something, you need hard facts to be able to convince people. So I wanted to come at it from a biology standpoint, just because one of the big things in this discussion is biology, biology in bathrooms. So just as genitals are part of the biology, genetics and the brain are part of biology as well. I think it's important to note that there are studies showing that transgender people are valid. So I have notes here. So the XY chromosomes, there can be things wrong with them in which a person who is born as a male could actually have female X sets chromosomes. There are things where as a person who is born as a female, they can have male chromosomes, that's Y. A study from the College of Augusta Medical School in Georgia has shown, this is one of the more recent ones, but as Sarah said, there is a lot of research on this. It shows that 21 variations in 19 genes actually makes it so, the pathways in the brain that deal with estrogen reception, which is the main chemical in providing masculinization or feminization, showed variance. So that, so, simple way to explain this, in fetus, when they are in the womb, the deciding factor whether they're born a male or a female is the amount of estrogen they get in the womb. So if those pathways are messed up, a male, so the baby who has the genetics of a male actually gets not enough estrogen to turn him into a female because for some reason biology is backwards in that way. But if they get blasted with estrogen before they're born, they will have more of a male brain. So really, when people are saying that the brain doesn't match the body, it's actually true due to science. So that's one thing. Endocrinopathies can happen in which the receptors for testosterone and estrogen are messed up. So they aren't getting the amount of estrogen or testosterone they need to present male or female. And then there's also the intersex people who are born with both of the genitals, and sometimes at birth, those are the ones that don't seem to be functioning as well are removed. Therefore, their genitals don't match their gender, which is a huge thing. And excluding those people from the bathrooms that they need to use is just not good. I also would like to talk about professionalism like Sarah talked about. At U N D., we are training to be a career professional, whether that be in a trade such as carpentry, or whether that be in a professional field like business. One big thing with professionalism is tolerance and professionalism. So as a professional, you're not going to call a person by the pronouns that you see when you look at them, their outward appearance. If they give you pronouns and a name, you're not going to call them by the name that you randomly dug up. So when a person meets you and they tell you their name, you're going to call them by their name as a professional. You're going to call them by their pronouns as a professional. And if we aren't having our professors call us by our names and by our pronouns, that's unprofessional and setting a bad example for the students. From a personal standpoint, I did enough misgendering and misnaming at home. I don't need that at U N D. too. My mom has already told me I'm going to hell, so I don't want my professor harassing me or fellow students harassing me because I don't need that. I'd like to end with the fact that being out new, I had never really been called my pronouns before, and I had been never gotten called by my chosen name. When I walked in on Saturday to the event that my friend invited me to, I got called by my proper name and proper pronouns for the first time. And you have no idea how good that makes me feel. You have no idea how hard I cried when I heard that for the first time. It was so warm. It was so nice. And I'd like that to happen more. I'd like to get that at school, too. That's all I have, but I'm open for questions. I also have that research article if any of you wanted. It's the first one I found that wasn't super full of medical terms.
Well, I just want to thank you for coming up here and talking. I think you're a great person to have go last because you left us all smiling at the end of this. I can't imagine any of us thought that's how we were going to end the night, but I just want to thank everybody for coming. I think undoubtedly my words were unduly harsh, and I apologize for that. I'm glad to be able to sit here tonight and listen and learn, and I'm glad that B J.'s offered to talk and to find a way forward. And I just appreciate all the stories and all the personally, deeply personal stories that everyone was able to share tonight. So thank you for everybody for coming. I do really appreciate it, and I'm glad that you came. So thank you.
Thank you for the apology. We really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. It's kind of weird just to move on. I need like a segue now. Anybody have any good? I don't know.
We can always talk about the Pride Events coming up.
All right, seven, approval of minutes. And if anyone wants to stick around, I'll be around afterwards, too, so feel free. Approval of minutes and bills?
7.1 is the vendor list as is presented.
Thank you. Do we got a motion to approve that? Got a motion from Sandy, a second from Mr. Weber. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Number eight, city administrator comments?
Mayor, I have a few. In honor of Martin Luther King, what a night for forgiveness. And if there's one thing he taught us is forgiveness, and so it was a beautiful night. And so thanks to everyone. Getting back to city business, trying to move the quality of life, I just want to give a few highlights that we're working on some quality of life initiatives and that I want to make you aware of. We are working with the city of Grand Forks Park District, and they've asked us to partner from the city of Grand Forks on some, I'll call it, quality of life initiatives. And those are centered around indoor courts, turf, and aquatics. And also with the aquatics that also engages is Grand Forks School District and also U N D., and we have some real issues with aquatics. So the mayor and I have met with him, and we have said that we would partner on behalf of the city regarding aquatics. And even council member Weigle and Cavami have enlisted, raised their hand to help partner on that to try to move those initiatives forward. The other thing I want to talk about regarding next week, there's a real move to, we have events funding, we have arts funding, and you know, the city of Grand Forks has a lot of incredible things to fund, programs and projects across the city. But I'm getting more and more requests to fund things beyond our normal formula schedules. And so I'm working on behalf of Mayor Bochensky on robotics. You know, this Alara Center hosts a large robotics, three-day event. We're moving back to being in-person, so that's a big deal, and they're asking for additional fundraising. There's also with concerts, and certainly we have events, but I'm getting more and more requests regarding concerts and how do we do that, more and more investments in our downtown concerts and other places. And even council member Weber, he and I talked about bringing the Blue Zones back because there's some nuance and some change. And so on all three of those, as I look at my email tonight, I'm going to plan to put those all on the 24th. Another reason why I'm going to do that is Julie Riggs. I spoke with her today, and she said she's scheduled to provide her briefing because we give our, you know, $130,000 to the Greater Grand Forks visit. And maybe it's a good opportunity not only to discuss what we did last year, what we're going to do this year with our regular funding and with her additional funding, but what else do we need to do? And so I think if we can have a conversation about quality of life and how we're going to move forward here next week on the 24th. So I'll work on some staff reports on those, but those are three areas. And with Julie here, I'd like to have a further conversation about how we want to move these greater initiatives forward. We talked about Fu Fang Group Limited and the Wet Corn Mill, and that's an enormous project. It's got a great opportunity, but it's got a lot, a lot to it. So we are working, I think we're down to some of the details, but you know, with all the final details inside the 20-yard line, they're all the important ones where you win, lose, or draw. So we're working on all those. We are going to go on a community trip. I want to say thank you to Fort Dodge, Iowa. I want to say thank you to Blair, Nebraska. We're going to go visit those two communities here near the end of this, later this week with a group of Grand Forks folks. And I want to thank Mayor Bochensky and council member Weber for going along, along with some city team members. So those two communities have been very gracious. They both host Cargill Wet Corn Mill, so we're going to go down there and not only do some visual tours, we're going to speak with the communities themselves and find out how they got across the finish line, how the last decade's been hosting these facilities, and then we'll bring that information back. So when we meet on the 31st, we'll have some do's and don'ts and some things we ought to be aware of. So thanks for everyone going along with that. Mr. Gosted is working on Memorial Village Development Agreement. Another good thing with U N D., you approved the tax incentive, but Mr. Gosted got a call the other day that U N D. is moving forward with that project. So that'll be in front of you, and that'll be a really great springtime moving the project forward. Now, one thing, approving these tax incentives, the other thing is to get to execution on that. The other thing that we've been working on, and Mr. Bean had brought up this, Melanie Parby is planning to bring the English Cooley Study. So we've been looking at this English Cooley. We looked at it with some of its degradation, some of it related to the Ulster Hospital that they're building, but we did some initial studies, so you'll see that on the 24th, too, which I think will be a good community-wide project. And then finally, we need to find some time to talk about citywide development. And one of the concerns we have from a city administration is that we have less and less lots that we've developed over the last few years. And so we really need to start redeveloping some citywide lots, and so we're going to come bring that back to you in the various areas that we're working to bring back presidential development. We've had significant growth over the last few years despite the pandemic and more to come, so we'll bring that back to you. We also owe you an update on the 47th Avenue Interchange. We're making progress on that with the North Dakota DOT and also the underpass at DeMers and 42nd. And those really tie into our citywide development in both those cases, so we'll bring those back. And then two other redevelopments that we really need to focus on in 2022 is the Grand Forks Water Treatment Plant redevelopment. We've had so many infill developments, but we'll bring that back and work with you, Mr. Weber, and Ms. Monk, because those are in your wards, and we really probably need to get back to kind of where we left off pre-pandemic and look at what the neighborhood wants, what the city wants, and how we can move forward with some requests for proposals on those developments. And then finally, we continue to work with those infill malls, the Columbia Mall and Grand City's Mall. We don't have any, but just so you know, as a city council, we are working with them trying to find ways similar to what we're working on with all of them, but to how do we help move forward with strategic projects with some sort of incentive. So a lot going on from a development perspective, and that's what we're supposed to do day to day, and it's always a joy to work with you, Mayor Bochensky, and city council in this entire community. This really is a wonderful community that we should be very proud of, so I'm proud to be a city administrator here, too. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. On to nine, mayor and council member comments. Mr. Weber, any comments tonight?
No, thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Dockler?
I do.
Please.
In honor of Martin Luther King Jr. Day, it's my duty as an elected representative of Grand Forks to declare in no uncertain terms that I fully support our BIPOC and our LGBTQ+ community here in Grand Forks. Trans rights are human rights, and I support all efforts for those individuals to live as their full selves in our community without discrimination or harassment. I received a message last Friday from a trans woman that I'll call Elizabeth for safety and privacy reasons. She's a 2010 Central High School graduate, and she asked me to share her story. She was not comfortable contacting me on my council email because she knew that it would be public record, and she is still not sure that her community back here would embrace her or keep her safe. I left Grand Forks the day after I graduated from Central High School. I was 17 years old. At the time, I had just come out as gay and lost all connection with just about everyone I interacted with. Aside from a small handful of people, I moved to Grand Forks in the fifth grade and even then described it as going back in time. I had never met I had never met or interacted with so many kids, teachers, and parents who were openly racist towards Native Americans and black people, specifically white people who were under the impression that they couldn't be racist because racism was over. I'd never heard so many coaches and gym teachers use the words F-word, or gay, or sissy, until I moved to Grand Forks. The people in Grand Forks are oftentimes nice, but they are not as often kind. Leaving the small town allowed me to meet other LGBT people who are successful and happy and building a life for themselves that didn't involve people who were so committed to misunderstanding them. I would not be the proud trans woman I am now had I stayed in that town. Leaving Grand Forks shouldn't be the only way queer people, or any marginalized group of people, I don't have the authority to speak for, to have the potential to thrive in safety as themselves. The answer is to make space for the things that make people different, and to respect what people tell you to call them, be it a different name than the one you met assumed them as, or a different pronoun. As it was 15 years ago when I first stepped foot in the town, Grand Forks has consistently stuck in the past, late to the beauty that society is developing to, frozen in fear. I would highly recommend rethinking your stance if you care about the people in your town, the ones who don't look and act exactly the way that you deem as the only way to be worthy of respect. People will build their own communities and support systems regardless. Would it be so bad if you weren't a roadblock to them? This is one of the many stories that people have entrusted to me over the last week, from former Grand Forks residents to the current, as well as people from all over the state of North Dakota who have heard about U N D.'s action to create a more inclusive and diverse campus. I've heard the pain and the confusion from so many people who trust us to lead. While I can only speak for myself as a councilwoman, I would hope I do not speak alone. To say that you belong here, LGBTQ plus members of our community are just that. They are our community. It is my elected responsibility to represent everyone within Ward, too, and to honor the people others are within, and to honor the people within this city. And so I will actively work against any efforts to bully this population, take away their rights, or do them harm, even if it hides behind religious doctrine or opinion, because human rights remain exactly that as always, human rights. Yesterday, I shared statistics about LGBTQ plus youth from the Trevor Project's 2021 National Survey on LGBTQ Youth Mental Health. Forty-two percent of LGBTQ plus youth seriously considered suicide in the past year, including more than half of transgender and non-binary youth. Ninety-four percent of LGBTQ plus youth reported that recent politics negatively impacted their mental health. Seventy-five percent of LGBTQ plus youth reported that they had experienced discrimination based on their sexual orientation or gender identity at least once in their lifetime. Half of all LGBTQ plus youth of color reported discrimination based on their race and ethnicity in the past year, including 67% of black LGBTQ plus youth and 60% of Asian Pacific Islander LGBTQ plus youth. Transgender and non-binary youth who reported having pronouns respected by all the people they lived with attempted suicide at half the rate of those who did not have their pronouns respected by anyone with whom they lived. LGBTQ plus youth who had access to spaces that affirmed their sexual orientation and gender identity reported lower rates of attempting suicide. Looking even closer at the data in North Dakota, the Community Uplift Program's North Dakota LGBTQ plus School Climate Report stated that 61.6% of LGBTQ plus youth in North Dakota seriously consider suicide, meaning they are 222% more likely than their straight peers. Forty-eight point five percent have made a plan to kill themselves, meaning they are 270% more likely than their straight peers. And 33.3% of LGBTQ plus youth have tried to kill themselves, meaning they are 354% more likely to have attempted suicide than their straight peers. And here we are, debating pronouns, and whether we should respect people regardless of our own personal opinions. And frankly, with numbers like these, it's not a surprise that our community misses out on the businesses and workers that many in the LGBT plus community would bring. If these statistics, which are representative of people, children, are not enough, perhaps I could persuade you and others in this community with the loss of economic dollars. As a lone social service provider up here, it doesn't escape me that my everyday work is significantly different than many of yours, in which I've had the honor of coming alongside people in the community to support them in times of crisis. And until you've had to listen and attempt to comfort a teenager who is crying in your office because they cut themselves again in the school bathroom, after their teacher continually misgendered them in front of their peers, save me your ideology unless it looks at each resident in this town as fully human. Worthy of the dignity and respect and welcoming are just words. They are just words unless they're supported by action and follow-through in policy, ordinance, and legislation. With this in mind, to move forward, I would like to introduce the following action items to create and implement a citywide hate crime ordinance for Grand Forks. I think a natural pairing would be to work with Officer Sampson, as he's the cultural liaison for the Grand Forks Police Department, and has done a phenomenal job in creating and implementing the Safe Space Initiative to signify people who are victims of hate crimes, that they are in a place where they may report without fear and may enter without fear. I would be honored to further this good work in reinforcing the city's 2017 inclusion resolution, in which we recognize that at every level of American society, people of all backgrounds contribute to our democracy, culture, and economy, regardless of race, ethnicity, country of origin, religion, gender identity, sexual orientation, age, physical or mental disability, or veteran status, and that we uphold the fundamental rights and principles upon which the United States of America was founded, establishing equality, respect, and dignity of all people regardless of background, and we pledge to stand against hate and discrimination and steadfastly affirm our dedication to the inalienable right of everyone to live without fear and intimidation. We condemn harassment, assault, or intimidation based on diversity, and the city and residents of Grand Forks are committed to fostering a welcoming and inclusive community through thoughtful actions. And two, the second action item, is, mayor, I would ask that you make a written apology, and you publish it in the same format, to the community that showed up tonight, for the individuals that weren't able to attend this meeting, and for the others that are out watching this statewide, because your words traveled a lot further than just Grand Forks, and they made a significant impact on quite a few different people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Doppler. Mr. Weber, can you follow that? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. President Armacost is unabashed in his belief in the power of love to bring people and organizations together for success. It sounds naive, but daily, he demonstrates how this is a beneficial and powerful approach. With that said, thanks for your courage this evening, and I mean that in relation to all who spoke during citizens' comments, and, and to you, Mr. Mayor. And that's, that's all I have. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Weber. Mr. Kravami?
No, thank you. No comment tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Bean? Is he still with us? I don't think he's with us. Vice President Mock?
Um, I just want to say that sincerely, I hope everyone feels welcome in Grand Forks, and I would love to be part of any effort to help make that happen.
Thank you, Ms. Mock. President Sandy?
Thank you, mayor. There's been a lot said tonight. I think treating people nice shouldn't be something that you should have to remind people of, and so I unfortunately will once again suggest to all of the citizens of Grand Forks to be nice to one another. Just be respectful and be nice, and I think if everyone did that, our community would continue to be a good place and probably be a better place. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, President Sandy. I think we can all agree to that, so, once again, thank you, everybody, for coming and sharing. Really appreciate it. Need a motion to adjourn. Mr. Weber? Move to adjourn. And Ms. Doppler, seconds. Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we are adjourned.